Calling to order, the Needham Select Board Meeting for September 10th, 2024. This is a public meeting and it is being broadcast by the Needham Channel, the Town's YouTube Channel, and via Zoom, and is being recorded for publication and later viewing. In accordance with the open meeting law, if anyone else in attendance wishes to record the meeting, they are required to notify the Chair first, so the Chair may notify other attendees. Needham observers here, they are recording, so be aware that they are also recording. If there's anyone else in attendance, please let me know at this time. Next, we have public comment. Is there anyone for public comment, on Zoom or in the room? Miles, anyone?
Okay, Mr. Chair.
Okay, great. All right. On the agenda, the next issue we have is proclamation, the 2024 Hispanic Heritage Month. The Vice Chair Heidi Frayle has a proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Town of Needham, 2024 Hispanic Heritage Month Proclamation. Whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month, known as Mesa Herencia Hispana, which is first celebrated in 1968, extends from September 15th through October 15th each year, and whereas the month is significant, as it covers the anniversaries of independence for Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Nicaragua, Mexico, and Chile; and whereas the rich heritage arts, histories, food, music, and traditions of all Latin American nations span an array of many distinct cultures; and whereas this month celebrates honors and pays tribute to all for their many contributions to our town and our society. Now therefore, be it resolved that 15 September through 15 October 2024 be declared Hispanic Heritage Month in the Town of Needham, and the Needham Select Board encourages all residents to observe this occasion as an opportunity for education and celebration. Signed this 10th day of September, 2024.
Thank you very much. Any comments?
So moved.
So moved, second?
Second.
Okay, let's have all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you very much. Okay. Next, we have a public hearing, removal of a public shade tree at 239 Manning Avenue. This is continuation of the last hearing. I'm going to assume that we don't have to be brought up to speed, we're not going to review all the materials unless you guys want to come up and present, or do you just want to deliberate?
So we want to just a brief opportunity to just go over the plan and then some picture?
Please do. Yeah. John Connolly, good to see you. Hello.
Mr. Chair, if you were on for the legitimate sake, could you ask me your name and address?
Yes, you heard that. Everyone, as you go down, please state your name and address for the record. Go ahead.
Carson Trining.
Address?
127 Rosemary Street. John Connolly, 67 May Street, Needham.
Deanna Virginia, 239 Manning.
Mike Virginia, 239 Manning.
Thank you very much.
All right. It will be brief, because I know there was a hearing on this several weeks ago. We wanted to just show an updated plan to give everyone just a sort of a picture of the lot with its strengths and limitations. Just as a matter of background, the Virginios and their builder, the Patrini Corporation, applied for their demolition permit, received their demolition permit, applied for their...
Excuse me, are you representing them?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Great, yep. And I'm speaking on their behalf this evening. And so they applied for the demolition permit and received it, applied for their building permit, received it, and then filed the requisite application for removal of a public shade tree, which is the tree that is shown on this plan to be right here. So after the 60 feet of frontage that is being, that the lot has, with the water, gas, and sewer lines which are here, which will all need to be tied into as they come off the street, with a tree here, it's our belief and position that that tree is not going to survive the activity of the digging and the excavation that is necessary to take place for those three lines to come in. It's also in the driveway, or the proposed driveway, for the house which we have received the building permit for. The plan, and we looked at, could this driveway be moved? The limitations in order to survive the tree. The limitations on that are the driveway comes over so far to this side, encroaching very closely to the property line on this side. There are leaching galleries which we're going to be building to collect the stormwater management, the runoff from the impervious services. And just as a note, the total amount of impervious service with this new house will actually be less than the current house that was taken down, and the long driveway that went all the way down there, which should not have any leaching galleries in it. The new house, a new construction, will have a leaching gallery there, and then back here, which will collect the stormwater runoff in line with the town's desires and goals, and then have that eventually reach out into the ground on a measured, regulated way. But we looked at, would it be feasible and possible and safe to move the driveway over this way and maybe somehow try to jig it? And then, but with the tree remaining there, with the limitations here on the property line and the driveway, it was our belief and our position that it just would not be something that's safe or feasible to have the driveway come in that close to the property line, that close to the tree, and then have it sort of swayed into where the garage is, or the proposed garage is supposed to be built. So our plan and our request is that we be allowed to remove the public tree. We're not doing it because that's what we want to do or like to do, or in the business of doing, but it's, we're doing it under this special circumstance because we think it's in the best interest of everyone, the town and the property owners, to have that tree removed, to allow the construction to take place. We are proposing to plant a new tree at the property owner's expense in the berm. We've talked with Ed Olson about the type of tree and the location of that tree to be planted here, and as you see, we've shown in this plan, that's where the proposed London Plain tree, which is the tree that Mr. Olson is recommending that we plant there, will be part of this plan. So it would be a removal of the existing tree, and just, just so you know, this is a picture of the existing tree. As you can see, it leans out onto Manning Street and is potentially going to have a traffic hazard with trucks and plows and other types of things. So what we're proposing is that we plant a new tree, have it guided correctly, so that it will, through its growing years, will grow straight up instead of out onto Manning Street, and that will be part of the plan that we're proposing as part of our request to be able, to be allowed to remove this tree here. And then finally, we are also, as part of our request, the Virginios are proposing to donate a tree to be planted at the Sunita Williams School in memory of Michael's mother, who was a longtime teacher in the school. And so this is a situation, and we'll do that at Arbor Day next year, and again, working with Ed Olson as to the location of the tree, that's Sunita Williams, and the type of tree to be planted there. And again, with that being the case, we'll now have two trees, with one tree removed, a net gain of one tree. And then the last matter, just has come up since we met with you last in August, we've had several conversations with the Bergdolls here at 233 Manning Street, have engineered a report and a visit from Hartney-Graimont to the tree on their property, which is abutting it. We have a plan to nurture and address that tree while the construction's taking place and then thereafter. And so we're working with them.
Thank you for doing that.
We're working with them, and they have that plan, and what we're proposing to do to work with them on that one. So with all of that in place, it's our request that you approve the application that the Virginios and the builder have in place to remove the public shade tree.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thoughts, comments? Kathy, you've...
This is the first time you've heard this?
Yes. So I plan to support this application to remove the tree. I think it's a difficult issue, and I share the concerns of the board about preserving trees in Needham, and I think we need to work on our regulations or our process in some way to do that. But I have, I have three reasons for approving this. One is that I do not believe that if we denied this, that we would save the tree. The tree is already damaged, according to Ed Olson. My second reason is that I have the highest respect for Ed Olson's opinion as an expert on this, and so he has recommended this. And then the third, which is important to me, is that I think homeowners and property owners, developers, anyone who owns property in the town, has to understand exactly what the rules are and has to be able to plan around the rules. So if anyone is buying a piece of property with the idea of developing it in a certain way, they need to have a general sense of whether that is possible or how they can figure it out. I don't want to see those kinds of decisions coming to us, where, you know, it may be seen that we're playing favorites, or it may be seen as arbitrary. I think it's a much better plan to have clear rules, process that people can follow and understand, you know, that they have noticed. So for those three reasons, I would approve this. However, I do, I am concerned about trees coming down in Needham, and I would like to see us have a community conversation about this. I think this is a difficult issue. I think it involves some real trade-offs in terms of property rights, you know, against sort of the community desire for more trees, so I don't underestimate the difficulty of that, but I think it's very important, and I think we need to try to preserve our trees for all the reasons that everyone else has stated, for the reasons of runoff, for the reasons of shade, climate, everything that trees do, beauty. So anyway, I would support the request to remove the tree.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to give everyone an update that the, since the last hearing, which was very emotional, very heated, which I think is regrettable, even though it's understandable. Since that last hearing, the tree committee, the beginning of the tree committee, has met and has undertaken to correct this process problem as our first item of business. So as I mentioned in our last hearing, this is really a problem of process. Everyone here has done, has followed the rules, and it still resulted in a bad outcome, or at least bad from our perspective, in that something that we think was foreseeable has happened. To correct that, the town is changing its process, so that a berm tree will be required to be noted at the time of the building inspection, at the, at the time that you're pulling the building permit, rather, and so it will be addressed prior to the permit being granted. So in a way, although this is certainly regrettable, it's benefited, you know, future homeowners, developers, and the town in that we can address these problems before they arise, rather than after the fact, which was, I think, the reason why this board was so upset. So I think that's a good thing, and it addresses some of those issues. It's not in place yet, but it's in the works. So one positive step, I agree with Kathy. I will, as I voted to last time, approve this based on Ed's recommendation, the highest regard for his opinion, his professional opinion, and I also don't feel that it's fair that the town have to pay to remove the tree in the future, so I would prefer that to be done at your expense. Thank you.
Good. Thanks.
Chair, can I ask a question about that?
Yeah.
So on the original submission, on the original plan, it was noted already.
But we, our process doesn't have a pickup for that. It wasn't, it doesn't, just even if it's noted, it doesn't mean that there's anything that stops them from moving forward.
No.
There will be now.
On the map, it does say that it was pending approval from Ed Olson, removal on that. So it was in, it was in the works. It was understood that that tree had to be, it was contingent on that, on that...
So that process is now going to be formalized.
Yeah. Yes, Mary.
Can I ask a question? I hope that that process does not in some way imply that if there's a berm tree, that the berm tree can never be removed.
No, I don't think it does. I think it just says that we need to address the issue and look at it before the tree is damaged.
Right.
And that way, if there is some mitigation that can be done, moving the driveway, whatever, I mean, it sounds like in this case, the gas lines are in the wrong place for the tree, but, so that it can be investigated.
Okay. All right. So somebody at least pauses for a moment and looks at it before saying, this is what's available. I do think with some of these non-conforming lots that have smaller frontages, there are fewer options for sure.
No, it doesn't guarantee, yeah, it doesn't guarantee an outcome. It just guarantees a look.
Okay. All right. I think that's important. I guess I would start by saying that in my time on the board, Eddie Olson's opinion is number one, two, and three on my list, okay? And I also think, as, I think all of us have gone back and re-looked at the tree, John's, Mr. Cohen's picture, or Tony Cohen's picture of the tree, you know, this is a tree that is an imperfect tree. I know that we love trees, that's absolutely true, but it is a tree that's already been hit on multiple occasions on the street, and it isn't a position water, it will be hit more. That's not beneficial for anybody, frankly, to have happening for the tree or for citizens who end up underneath it because of whatever circumstances. So I do think the decision to remove the tree and to replace it, as it's been suggested, is the right one. I will also say, it would have been my bias or wish that the tree could have been placed on the property rather than in the berm. That's another whole discussion, probably. At this point, I'll take the berm, but yeah, my bias would be that trees go on property, and berm has its own set of issues, as we are seeing.
Right. This is a public hearing. Does anyone in the audience need to speak, wish to speak? Yes, Mr. Carter. You got to come up, and we'll give you a mic. Name and address, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Artie Crocker, 17 Fairland Street, Needham. I'm glad to see that the plans had changed since the last time. I'm certainly glad about that. The thing that we have to keep in mind is that, at least I believe they had changed from the very beginning, as far as replanting a tree on the berm, at least something had changed.
There was always a plan to do it.
Otherwise, okay, okay. I missed that, then. One thing that we keep in mind is that if this was designed accordingly, the tree could have stayed there. If it was designed, realizing that, okay, we have to keep that tree, it could have stayed there. I have no doubt things could have been arranged to keep the tree. I have no doubt that if care was taken, that the tree wouldn't have been damaged further than what's going on now. And I appreciate, you know, the tree in your mother's honor, that's great. I mean, I think that's a really great idea. But we have to keep these things in mind, that the tree didn't have to be further damaged, because this is not, this is a known, builders know this. They know, when they run over the tree roots, close, even closer to the tree, it's going to make it worse. On the Conservation Commission, we knew that. It's simply a known issue. So we have to take, again, take into account, then there's the value of the tree. Okay? The value of the tree is worth a lot more than just, here's a tree, here's a tree around the property, and then here's another tree somewhere else of incredibly much smaller diameters. So from a worst standpoint, from the environment, it is no, there's no comparison. Yes, the tree, at this point, the tree is further damaged, and yeah, it's going to come down. I get that, okay? And I can appreciate that, and I can see that happening. But we have to take it from the standpoint of beforehand, before what was going on then, and what do we have to do based on, based on from that point forward? Where's the value of the tree, and what do I have to do to mitigate that value of the tree? And mitigate the fact, and I know you're talking about that, you know, understanding the process going forward as far as what builder's going to do, but we have to, there has to be an example of plans that have to be put, plans that have to be put in place to keep the tree. That's the first priority, is there are ways around it. Doesn't mean, it doesn't mean, like you said, doesn't mean it's going to be the outcome. But that's the first priority, keep the tree. The second priority is, okay, if you can't keep the tree, what do we do to mitigate the loss of that tree? Personally, I don't think two trees is remotely mitigating that loss, not at all. And I'm not, to be honest, I'm not going to count the cost of cutting, taking the tree down. I've seen, I've been around long enough to know, it doesn't take very much money to take a tree like that down. Certainly doesn't cost $7,000. Sorry, I saw that figure. It doesn't remotely cost that to take it down. So I think you have to take that into account. I would also ask that, before a decision is made on the board, that you actually hear all the public comment first. Okay? So I would request that, I would request that as just a resound of respect for the public that come up here and made their comments, to see what you think should be done, because, you know, again, I get, I get this, okay? But maybe, you know, maybe another tree, maybe two more trees, maybe there's a tree diameter which should be in place, not just whatever's in there now. Maybe it's a four-inch diameter tree. I know it's, they're harder to come by. But, you know, again, you know, again, maybe there's a place on the property, you know, which said, maybe there's a place on the property where it can go. Okay? So instead of saying, you know, instead of making the final decision, yes, this is fine, but, you know, it's really here, everything that's going on, the possibilities of what we have to consider. So that's it.
Thank you.
Consider, consider where we were and where we have to get back to. Okay, thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Yes, Ross Donald. Come on up, say your name and address, please.
My name is Ross Donald, 25 H. Chambers Street, and regardless of what's done, I'm interested in actually how we talk about these issues. It's a rhetorical issue, and it's, I've mentioned this before, my studies in these regards come from a training in, in English and literature and so on, and I'm calling it media forensics. And I think having the video of what people have said about these things, I don't, it's not to hold people to, you know, saying, you made a mistake, but it's more like, did you really say that? Did you, are you listening to yourselves when you say that? For instance, some of the quotes are, we have to, let's see, oh, there, if this, we've reiterated it here, the need to understand upfront what's expected. I think you knew what was expected, you know, building the building, talking with professionals. I think you knew what was expected of you regarding the trees. So to say something like that is sort of disingenuous, I think, although maybe, maybe you missed it. Maybe you just missed it. So that's possible. The, and, but when Ed Olson, as honorable as a person he is, when he says, this tree will die, is he sure about that? When? Tomorrow? Is it going to die tomorrow? Is it going to die two years from now?
I would defer to Ed's expertise.
Yes, oh yeah, no, he's an expert. But his conclusion is that, what he said was, all the roots are going to be taken out with this construction. I don't think all the roots are going to be taken out. Maybe half the roots are going to be taken out, but what he said was all the roots. So I, you know, I hope you don't come down on me for quibbling, those are his words, and I'm questioning his words. What truth do we have the words? He's saying something, we know what his position is, but we don't have to get hyperbolic about, you know, the situation. And things like, the tree is already dead. You know, you don't want to tear it down, but when you say, the tree is already dead, is it dead? It's not dead, is it? I don't think so. And yet, we say, the tree is already dead, you know? So anyway, and I think part of the reason this is important is when we, now that we're considering sustainability, you know, another word is enduring. What's going to endure? Well, the trees can endure. The trees are going to live, have the possibility of living longer than we do. There are trees that are hundreds of years old. So I think we, and I think when we get into solving problems by tearing things down, I'm beginning to call that reactionary destructiveness. It's a sign of, I don't know, an illness, and it's, it's not healthy, but we should be aware of when our solutions are to destroy something. Just tear it down. It's the, it's part of the building problem, the big house problem.
True. Anyway, so thank you very much.
You've given me a lot to think about. I really think this is the greatest show on earth. I thought you've, you've handled some of the bigger issues, and frankly, although this is evolving into a big issue, particularly on Columbus State. You're dealing with traditions, a change in tradition, and I thought you, as a board and as individuals, you handled the issues really well in thinking about it and addressing. And I think that's what's going to happen with this tree issue, so.
You're flattering. Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes. Name and address, please.
Michael Lombard, 14 Bridle Trail Road here in Needham. Just appreciate the discussion here tonight. I think the smartest thing I heard, or one of them, was the issue of the tree on the berm should really go on a property because sidewalks are filled of trip hazards, and that, getting it off the berms and the property is a good solution. But really, quite frankly, at the end of the day, replacing two trees, replacing one tree with two trees is a win-win for the town. And you mentioned sustainability, and I understand new trees are smaller than the tree that's getting, or may get torn down, but ultimately, those young trees are going to be more sustainable and last longer than that one tree that's there now. And also, I live over by Claxton Field, and there were just 53 trees that were taken down to be replaced by 73 trees. So we're getting a two-to-one replacement here versus 1.6 to one. So I think we ought to look at that if we're holding people to a different standard, and we have a young couple that wants to move into the town, grew up here, want to move in, pay their taxes, send their kids to the school, and be here and work with the sustainability of the town. So I think we ought to look at that to welcome people to the town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Yes, Jeff. Name and address, please.
Jeffrey Heller, 1092 Central Avenue. I came to this meeting for another reason, as you know, and, but as usual, I just can't seem to keep my mouth shut. As a tree hugger, I come here, and I'm, I come late to the story, but I looked at, you know, I should have looked at the notes here, looking at that tree. And as a tree hugger, yet I understand, you know, I built the house, and I fought the builder who said, why, you know, why are you leaving that tree there? And it's like, because it's the only one I can. Oh, it's going to die. And, you know, they dug out within less than three feet of the roots of, and it's within eight feet of the house, and left it there, and it's like doing really fine, and I, right? So, you know, they, they make stories up, and, you know, and, you know, things survive. However, if you look at the situation here, I read your letter, you know, you made a, you certainly got the design and all of that, but you approached it with, they made an offer, a good offer. You offered to move that tree. You know, you look at that tree, and where it's leaning, and it's on a berm, you know, and there's not a, there's not a curb, you know, a granite curb there. So that's going to continue to lean that way and be intrude, even if it were, you know, left there and would survive after the roots, you know, would, would come back, you know, so. But they offered to move it. That was my first knee-jerk reaction when I first, you know, sat here and said, you know, they just spend the thousand-soe dollars to move it and put it, you know, down on the berm the other way. And then there's an offer, you know, you put it in the middle, that's a beautiful London plain, that's the Camor. I have one in my yard, and they grow really fast. And if you put that in the middle of a lawn and straightened it out, it would be a beautiful tree. And that was your first offer. So I think in part of the process, you opened up, you know, the process for discussion and a nice offer. And I certainly think, maybe, maybe it opens up a discussion of saving that tree, but, you know, it sounds like a lot of people, you know, could have a little give and take. That's my kind of, tree huggers try to save the tree, and even if you move another tree in a berm without a granite curb there, it's going to, it's going to be compromised as well and get in the way of Manning Street. So that's my two cents.
Thank you very much. Okay. Is there anyone else? Okay. Comments from the board? Let's take a vote. Do I have a motion?
I can make a motion.
Sure.
That the board votes to approve and sign the public shade tree here in front for the removal of our London Plain tree, and it will be on at 239 Manning Street.
Second.
Okay.
I would have said, subject to the conditions from our treaty.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Second on that? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Nay? Three to two. We're done.
I want to thank you for coming back tonight.
Miles, do you want drawing?
I want to thank you for coming back tonight.
Miles, do you want drawing?
Unless Eddie needs it.
Eddie, could you just stay one minute?
Attorney public, just for a second.
Just take a seat for a minute. This is Ed Olson, a tree warden. I want to thank you very much for everything you do. There's a lot of bright lights in Needham.
Hopefully I'll find her on one of my Mondays or Fridays.
Thank you. And you're one of the brightest. So thank you. We really do appreciate everything you do, even though this issue is hard. I will add, this summer I went to San Francisco. And other than the earthquakes, wildfires, and drought, it's almost as nice as Needham. But going around, there's a lot of redwoods and sequoia trees, and everyone from Needham says, if Ed Olson had a sequoia or a red tree, he'd make it really big. So I got you two sequoia trees. So thank you very much.
Oh, my goodness. It's my favorite tree too.
And here's a plan. We're going to meet in a thousand years. And this will be bigger than the radio towers. All right, so there's two of them there. Enjoy. And they're only $7 each. So town council, I'm all clear on everything, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Don't put them on a berm. Don't put them on a berm.
Not on a berm, please.
All right. Next up, we have public hearing, recycling and transfer station user fees and charges. Please have the Solid Ways Disposal and Recycling Advisory Committee come up. Dave Davison, Harris, Celia, and Matt.
Mr. Chair, if I could move the appointment to consent?
Good. Thank you. Would someone second it?
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it passes. Thank you, Mary.
All right. Mr. Chair, we're coming before you with recommendations for the recycling transfer station fees. After working with the recycling transfer station, Recycling Advisory Board over the last several months, we're coming before you with several recommendations. First is that there would be an increase to the package of 10 bags for the large bags from $20 to $21.60, which is approximately an 8% increase. The last time the fees were adjusted was in 2018. The small bags of going from $10.75 per a package of 10 to $11.60, or $0.85, about 7.9% increase. The last time those fees were adjusted was in July of 2016. There's a recommendation that was missed when we presented it to the board last September to introduce a fee for commercial drop-off of box springs and mattresses of a fee of $40. The fee for residents would remain the same, and that's $20. The, there's a recommendation to increase the fee for televisions to be dropped off to the same rate as flat-screen TVs and other flat screens, since the cost to the town for disposal that we paid the contractor is exactly the same. And therefore, we were looking to have that be identical to the flat screens, which is $20, going from $15 to $20.
Are there still tube TVs?
Yeah.
All right.
Lot of basements, lot of attics.
All right, okay.
People coming back and putting, you know, the CCRs.
Oh, good, yeah. I have one, working one. All right. This isn't a confessional. Thank you.
The next thing is a proposal from Public Works, which does make sense in terms of addressing small contractors, is adding to the snow dump rates, is allowing for a cubic yard rate of $4 per cubic yard with a minimum fee of $15. But generally, there would be about easily four yards of snow coming in to be dumped. And again, with the understanding that that could be during the day, and of course, provided that there's sufficient space at the time that they want to dump.
Okay.
The last thing is to.
And that there's snow.
And that there's snow, correct. And if someone can come in with snow that we don't see on the ground, well.
We'll let them pay for it.
Yes. The, also some cleanup. We're looking to remove from the fee schedule the trommel screener rental. The town has not rented the trommel screener in years, and there's no sense in keeping it on the schedule. And also, to basically remove a duplicate fee. We had a fee for brush and leaves, both at a cubic yard and also by weight. The cubic yard for brush in particular, because it's a little harder, unlike snow, which really packs down, and you can generally know how much you have in the back of the truck. Brush can be up in the air, and there'll be a lot of empty space underneath. So it's a guessing game of how much is there. So it is better to bill by tonnage rather than by volume, and hence, remove the volume.
Okay. Excellent. Thoughts? Anyone? I have a question. What's a trommel?
I don't defer.
Trommel is what we screen the compost with. When you put it, the leaves into a pile, and you let them break down over time, you've got a lot of, you know, smaller pieces that don't break down. The trommel screener has a hopper, the loader will put that unscreened load in there. And a big drum turns with screens. So anything that's like a half inch or less drops out as finished compost, and a conveyor belt ejects that into the screen pile. And everything that kicks out the back end is your tailings, which is usually just woody pieces that can be reintroduced back into the process further down. So as it ages another year, you might get a little compost out of that.
Okay.
The neat machine. It's the one that's tucked way in the back, the green one.
Yeah, I've been, no one rents it?
You know what? We rented it, and it wasn't treated that well. You know, you could get there, and someone would have an excavator, and they'd be hucking dirt with a lot of big rocks into it really quickly, after the machine could handle it. And the repairs after a rental were usually worse. They didn't necessarily keep up with the cost of the.
Okay. It was a discussion amongst the committee for years, too. Some superintendents used it a lot, to the point where sometimes, you know, it was when wanted to be used in Needham, it was out for being for rental. Or, you know, then it come back broken, and then things backed up, back at Needham. So it's something that we were very aware of over the years. And I think we were supportive of not renting it out. Perfect. Thank you. All right, comments?
Mr. Chair, I have a question. In terms of the per-bag fees, I'm just looking at the schedule, comparing the proposed Needham fee with other towns, and then also considering that you've said that it would help cover costs. Did you have a philosophy in approaching that? Was it to cover the cost, or was it to be in a certain place on that list of surrounding towns, or?
Interesting you should ask. The, that was a question that the committee had. And the fact is, the select board has not taken a formal policy in terms of what it would want fees to recover, or fees to recover in cost, meaning what, how much of a tax subsidy. We certainly, when it was an enterprise fund, the goal was always tried to be at 100%, but it never was. And it was always a subsidy. And it was one of the things that the subsidy was growing year after year. And it was why it was determined that having it retained as our enterprise fund didn't make sense, and hence, I came back into the budget. But certainly, you would not want any less than 50% of the cost being recovered by fees. And that would be something that, that we would ask the board in the future, if the board wants to see a higher recovery rate, knowing, of course, that that's going to have that much more of an impact in terms of what the fees will have to be adjusted.
Is that the fee for the bag or the fee for the program?
The fee for the bags. We eliminate the sticker fee, which is essentially a program fee. So it'd be for the bags, and, of course, over the scale would be impacted by that. And the over the scale certainly generates more revenue on a, on a per-pound basis than the bags do.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
First, I think the changes make sense. I had a question about those commercial tipping fees. Since you changed them last time, have you noticed any change in how much commercial operators come to Needham?
Aye. Well, June, July, and August have been really high. So we're doing about, typically, I'd say July is around less than 700 tons per month, and we were in 850. And August would also typically see a dip, although last year when we had the floods, it was a record. But I would expect July to be in the 750, 750 tons, and we're again 850. So we're over budget and out of range already with just these first two months. However, our June's down. Typically, June is a very heavy month for us, and that was down, but it really flowed into the summer. So it fluctuates, and you don't exactly know why. So we'll just keep watching it. But no, there's been a demand, and the tonnage is high.
I know we discussed the possibility of requiring tippers, or commercial haulers to, when they collect in Needham, to bring it to Needham.
Right. That was discussed in the.
So I can talk about that. We did a study, I think, 2018, 2019, and we looked at, it's called flow controls. And effectively, it was a net negative when we looked at it, because the volume that was going through, the additional staff that we would need in order to manage that volume, would have offset any potential increase in revenue that we would have realized. So it was determined through that study that it did not make sense at that time to pursue flow control.
All right. Yes, Mary.
I just want to comment. The data that you presented was helpful and interesting. I mean, it was interesting to see how other towns think about bags and cost of stickers or whatever the resident permit is for a year. It certainly thinks, when you look at that landscape, that there is room for thinking about what amount of the cost do we want to recover. And there's clearly more room there. So it was helpful to understand that.
Right. Yeah, I noticed that with the rates, Weston Bag Rate, and also the Wellesley one's much higher, too. Their trash must be more valuable. But I think a commercial, what is it, 100, basically, like, someone has a haul, it would be 120 a month. So we're still well under that with, you have to bring it. And I think you meant to say Weston. Did I say, yeah, Weston, right? Yes, Weston. Wellesley's not on the list, yeah.
They don't charge a bag fee?
Or is it this, Roche Brothers and Wellesley, they do one?
They sell our bags because the Linden Street one, they're not.
They do? All right.
They, well, if you live on Clark Circle or something, and you go over there for shopping, you'd be buying Needham bags. I think there are people who are on Needham Wells that want to shop there. But the Linden Street Wells does sell the bags.
Okay. This is a strange world.
It is a strange world. But I don't think they're violating as much as it seems. Unless they don't need to buy a bag to go Wellesley.
Thank you. All right. This is not a voted issue. We're just.
We're just discussing.
Just discuss.
It is a public hearing.
It is a public hearing. Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone in the room who wish to speak? Is there anyone on Zoom who wish to speak?
No.
What's this, Maya?
No one.
No one? Anyone in the room? Okay. Thank you very much. And thank you for all your work on this. It's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have a public hearing, application for an all, a new all-alcohol restaurant license, Poet King Restaurant Group LLC, doing business as The Hungry Coyote. And come on up. And so we have Nate Solcajdel, Leon, Leo, not Leon, Chrissy.
Mr. Chair, there's one more person here, Wilson Mejia, who is.
Wilson.
Yes, sir. He's been assisting the applicants with their application.
All right. Thank you. What's your last name?
Mejia. M-E-J-I-A.
Thank you, Wilson. Okay. Very well. So I'm going to hereby open this hearing pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 138, Section 12 and 16C, to consider requests from Poet King Restaurant Group LLC, doing business as The Hungry Coyote. Leona Leon, proposed manager of the record, of record for a new Section 12 restaurant, all alcohol beverages license at 1185 Highland Avenue, Needham. And you're all here. Thank you. And would you like to present?
Yes.
Whatever, yeah. He can go first.
Yes, my name is Wilson Mejia, and a few months ago, Nessa and Leona told me they need help to stay compliant on tax, but they also presented that they want to pursue the alcohol license. And I was so busy, I told them no at first, but then I went a couple of times over there to see what they do, you know, what they thinking, all the dream that he has to, you know, serve like margarita with tacos and everything. And I said, why not? Because this is a father-in-law, he's a hustling, small business owner. And then I decided to help him.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I'm here again, asking all the board for your help, maintain The Hungry Coyote alive, which it takes a lot to maintain a restaurant open in Needham. The rents are very high. The liquor licenses will help us maintain, I have a loan lease still, 10 more years.
Okay.
And I would like to have the liquor license, not just for me, for the town of Needham. It's, it's not just a dream of mine to have a liquor license. That's not my dream. My dream is to have my kids to be healthy and happy and all that stuff. The liquor licenses will definitely help pay the rent, a little extra revenue. I don't know how well it's going to do. We wouldn't do well when we had it. But I'm willing to give you another chance, if you guys would have to give me another chance.
Okay.
I know there's some stuff on my record that I'm not very proud of it. I pay my dues of the mistakes that I make in my life. And I'm here asking for another opportunity for us to serve the alcohol again.
Okay.
Now I own two restaurants in Needham. The other one is not doing so good, but that's no discussion for this time.
Okay. This alcohol license is just for the.
The Hungry Coyote, for now.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Leona's going to be helping me.
I'm here to help Francisco, to, if you guys give the license back, I'm ready to back to work.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right. So as Maya's saying, that this business does have a history of suspension and loss of the prior liquor license in the town. Accordingly, I've asked the staff to review the history of the benefit of the board and the inclusion of the record for this hearing. I've also asked council to identify the relevant topics of inquiry for the application of this type. So based on the council's feedback, I suggest that we chunk this discussion out into six, or seven parts. And there you go. We're going to talk about the completeness of the application. We're going to talk about the proposed manager of records employment history. We'll then discuss the proposed manager's record, manager of records interest in prior licenses that were subject to disciplinary action. We're going to discuss the proposed manager of records fitness generally. We're going to discuss Mr. Leon's fitness to hold an interest in the license generally. We're going to discuss a court report, and then we'll discuss other matters of interest to the board. So if you don't mind, I'm going to jump in. We'll talk section A, completeness of the application. This has been submitted three times. It was submitted on August 13, 2024, and the application was missing information. It's also, Maya's saying, that town staff contacted you with a list of missing information. They also requested a continuance to continue the statutory required deadline of 30 days to allow the applicant you to collect more information. You did decline just the continuation. So I wanted to just put into the record, into the hearing record, one, the email from Miles Tucker to the applicant's agent dated August 29, 2024, and two, the original application submitted on August 13, 2024, redacted to remove protected information, and three, a revised application submitted in parts between August 30 and 2024 in this hearing. this hearing. Do you guys want to speak to it? Questions? Thoughts?
Well, I don't, I mean, I don't know if it's appropriate to address issues in the incomplete application, but, I mean, it did strike me that in the original application, some of these questions were not, were not truthfully answered. You have previously held an interest in an alcoholic beverage license, but it's, the box here is checked, no.
Me or her?
Section of the license.
It's, it, I'm, it's you.
Well, I never had a license before.
Oh, because it was under her name, but.
Through the chair, Mr. Leon was not a party to the liquor license held by the current LLC.
Okay, because it was under the.
With a different order.
Yeah, okay, okay. All right, fair enough. Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So there are a couple of things. I was looking at your corporate filings at the state. I had understood that Mr. Sayad did not have any ownership in this.
No longer.
Business anymore.
No.
But in fact, his address is the address that's listed on the corporate records as the location for records being maintained and in your annual report?
He's in charge of the paperwork. If he does a mistake, we need to be corrected.
Yeah, the thing here, when I did the records, I didn't know that's, that's address specific, because that was on previous application. So I just paid the, both for the 23 and 24, for the articles organizations, and that's what's over there already, so that's the reason why. But we can change that anytime.
Okay, so, so Mr. Say does not have a current ownership in the business. I think there's a section of the application that, that asks for information about the ownership of the business that's not completed.
Not all.
Is there anybody else who's involved in ownership of the business? What is that structure?
It's just me, and she will be the manager of the liquor license. I own 100% of The Hungry Coyote now.
Okay.
And 100% of the mariachi.
Okay. Kathy, anything? Okay, my understanding is there are two instances where there's incorrect information in the application. And then a third instance was that, Leona, you cited April 2022 as the occasion of a problem, but that date never happened. It was in the application. Okay.
In regard to that, that, that was the last time that you suspended the license.
No, it wasn't. That April 2022 was.
No, it was, it was, it was, it was missed.
It was sidelined, yeah, that's, that's quite frankly some of the problem with this application.
Apologies for that.
Yeah, so then let's go into manager of record, the employment history. And I like to address the employment history section of the manager of record form. Section 10C states that Ms. Leona has worked at Poet King Restaurant Group LLC since August of 20, of 2019. So when entering to the record, the minutes and video of the board's February 14th, 2023 meeting, at which the board was considering a request to lift the suspension of Hungry Coyote's liquor license. So in this meeting, Ms. Leon, Mr. Leon stated that Ms. Leon was not an employee of the business, but rather was present at the business, present at the business due to their spousal relationship. Based on my recollection, I know that Mr. Leon stated that Ms. Leon was not nor has been an official employee, but rather a participant in business activities due to her spousal relationship with Mr. Leon. Mr. Leon know that Ms. Leon would become an official employee if approved to continue as manager of record. So Ms. Leon, my question to you is, can you address whether you have been an employee for the Poet King Restaurant LLC as a manager since August of 2019?
2019, and I, I leave The Hungry Coyote when the pandemic.
You did?
Yes. And I'm back now, like.
Okay.
Thoughts, anyone?
Back since when?
This, this, uh, this month.
Oh, this month, okay, really now.
Too ready to, to back to get you guys to give the license.
She's back to be full-time employee?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Great.
And Ms. Leon, are you, you're listed in here as having 40 hours a week of work time. Is that something that you are now able to commit to the business?
Yes, I have to work 24 hours to The Hungry Coyote.
Okay. Right, all right, let's go into section C, manager of record disciplinary actions. I would now like to address the disciplinary history section of the manager of record form that was included in this application. I note that the original application submitted on August 15th affirmatively stated, affirmatively stated that Ms. Leon had not been the manager of record of any liquor license subject to a suspension, revocation, or cancellation order. It is my understanding that the town staff questioned the validity of this information and that Ms. Leon amended the form in response. In the revised application, section 10D states that Ms. Leon has an interest in retail license and that the disciplinary action was taken against the license because the manager wasn't working enough hours. The listed date of the violation was April 2022, 20, April 2022. I hereby enter into the record the following violation orders. One, liquor license suspension order notice of decision dated January 14th, 2022, including in this attachment. And two, liquor license cancellation order notice of decision dated July 26, 2023. The January 14th order suspended the license for the following reasons, and there are three. One, permitting an illegality to occur on the premise to wit failure to comply with the summary suspension order of the Town of Needham Public Health Division dated December 31st, 2021. Two, maintaining the premises in an unsanitary manner as detailed in the summary suspension order of the Town of Needham Public Health Division dated December 31st, 2021. And three, operating without a licensed manager or appointing a new licensed manager without the select board approval. The 20, July 26, 2023 order canceled the license due to failure to operate. The licensee did not appeal either of these orders, which means the orders are final. However, neither of them is listed in the disciplinary section for the application in section 10D. At all times relevant to those orders, Ms. Leon was listed as improved and approved manager of record. So Ms. Leon, can you address the failure to include these disciplinary actions in your application? They were not included in the application.
In what application?
Porque no lo dijimos.
Okay.
Let me just ask a question. So I, I see that you have the manager on 2022. That's what's the last, the last time that you suspended the license, right?
It was revoked in 20.
23.
But do you include over there that's even because of the manager that you suspend the license at some point, right?
Sorry.
You suspend the license on 2022 because of the manager failure?
No.
No.
There was three reasons. One of them was no manager. The other one was something that happened with the health department.
Right. And then it was in April 2022.
And to Leona's, not to answer Leona's, but she, she didn't, she did, she never thought that she had anything to do with it. There was not her, everything had to rely on me. She thought, that's why she answered the question that she, because she really believed that she had nothing to do with it. She just left the job. And because she had no manager, or Matthew, Adam Mosaias, had no manager, then the license was suspended, which could easily be replaced by hiring a new manager, but we did it.
Okay. All right. Anyone on the board? Wish to comment, questions? Okay. I'm gonna jump into section D, proposed manager of record, general fitness. Anyone on the board wish to speak about this issue?
So I would definitely say that I am concerned about fitness to be the manager at this point with an alcohol license. I, the track record that exists here is troubling. The defying of town orders to suspend operations, but you're continuing those operations in the past, is severely problematic, and I would have difficulty overcoming those facts.
Yeah, I guess I'm unclear what's changed. You've, you've said that the reason that you didn't list the prior violations is because you didn't think that they were your responsibility, thought they were yours. But you're asking for that responsibility again now, and I'm not sure what, what's, what's different.
And I'm ready to get my job back and be in there 40 hours, the license I need. I have the people to help me, and I'm be there, I'm going to be there.
Sure.
And I think he needs the license for continue have the, the business. He has a business in here, and he need it.
So, so do you recognize that the last time you had the license, this was under your name and is therefore your responsibility? As well as his responsibility? I mean, do, do you?
I'm sorry, I, I, it's my responsibility to, and I only say I'm sorry for that happen.
Yeah, I, I'm not, I'm not asking you for an apology. I'm just saying that either you're the manager of record and it's your responsibility, in which case you, you acknowledge that by checking the correct box, or you don't. But it just, it makes it a little hard to believe moving forward that you're gonna take the responsibility as seriously as we expect you to take it. I'm just trying to understand, you know, what has changed.
I want to say something. When I was asking them questions, trying to help them to complete the application and everything, they have a lot of problem, remember the exactly days, the reason, exactly reason why. So you can see over there, he mentioned the manager over there, and he also told me that he has some, had a problem because the department went over there and something was not in compliance, but he fixed all the stuff over there. And then for the manager, he couldn't have on time to complete the application and everything. So I'm trying now to help them to go through all this process over here and to do that stuff right, you know, to, you know, to do whatever they need to do to stay compliant and do everything that you require. Is the problem on the manager right now, or is the problem on something else?
Well, right now, we're just talking about the manager.
All right.
Okay. And then we also add that the, submitting the application is your game day. We are not here to workshop this now.
Yeah.
All right, that was submitted, so we're only responding to it and adjudicating on that. So we are not here to like revise and tweak as we go along.
Mr. Chair, I just have a question. So as Ms. Leon said, so you left, you were the manager of record, then you left. When a manager leaves, whose responsibility is it to inform the, the select board? Is it the manager's or the, the license holder's responsibility?
Probably the license holders, I would assume. It, it was, it was right at the beginning of the pandemic, she was off and on work and, and helping out. There was no need for a manager at that point. It was the beginning of the pandemic, 2021, and.
And I no leave the place, I always in there.
Just tell the mother, all my kids, she's always there.
Why? And I always in there. The only thing I not get a pay, I always there, never leave the place, I always there, helping. And I will.
To answer your question, the identified listed manager of record on the license needs to be present at the, at the, at the business unless and until a new one is identified and approved.
And ultimately, through the chair as well, the license owner, if the manager of record were to leave, is responsible for replacing them, ensuring that there is a manager. However, the former manager of record, it would be in their distinct best interest to work with the ownership to have their name removed.
Yes, we've funded that before.
Yes.
Is there a distinction about whether that particular position is paid or unpaid?
I don't know from the regs. It's typically a paid position, like it's an, it's an employee of the job. It is a job.
If it ceases to be treated as a job, is it, does it count?
The licensed manager of record, I would say, needs to be physically present on premises and doing their job, which is administering the liquor license for the business. So.
For many small family restaurants.
By what?
Family members. I don't know.
I don't know how that works. Okay.
Okay. We good? We're gonna go into section E, Mr. Leon's fitness to hold an interest in the license. Ms. Leon has not had an interest in a prior license, but prior hearings before the board have disclosed that Mr. Leon has acted as a de facto manager of record during a time when the restaurant remained open in violation of a board of health order. So I hereby enter the following documents to the record. One, the April 12th, 2023 select board minutes and video of the meeting and two, the April 19th, 2023 notice of decision denying the change of officers, directors, LLC managers, stock of ownership, you know, stock of ownership interest in issuance, transfer of stock, new stockholder application into the record. Now, at the April, at the February 14th, 2023, and the April 19th, 2023 meetings, Mr. Leon expressed his dissatisfaction with the work the health department, which had ordered the restaurant to close. The April 19 minutes also reflect Mr. Leon's acknowledgement that he was a person, that he was a reason the restaurant remained open in violation of the health board, health department order. The April 19th, 2023 notice of decision reflected the board's findings that Mr. Leon was not of sufficient character to hold an interest in the license. The decision notes that Mr. Leon has a history of ignoring orders of local municipal bodies, including his disregard, disregarded the summary suspension order of the board of health and delay in providing documents requested by the board relevant to the hearing. So I invite you. Your comments, questions?
If I, if I may, address that point again. Me and the health department are back to 100%, I, I, back to normal, let's say, a normal friendship, let's say, or a partnership as well. Everything from that, that moment on has been correct, no, no more, any issues whatsoever. Yeah, I'm not saying that's perfect, but it, it is, we have become a different, a different company, and I learned, I learned a lot from my own mistakes on, on, on that matter. And ever since, me and Say, we've been, we've been working on a lot of different things.
Okay.
And we've, we've been complying, not only one location, but both locations are in compliance with the date.
Very good. Any other comments? Okay. Going, going to section F, the query information. As part of this application, the select board has received a query report concerning the license application applicant. In accordance with the Massachusetts law, the board cannot disseminate the details of this report. As a result, I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session under purpose seven, the purpose of discussing the contents of this report. Anyone?
So moved.
Okay.
Are you seeking a motion now?
Yes. Is it moved? Do you want to read?
Do we want, you want to go into executive session now?
Yes. Yeah, we got, the show goes downstairs right now.
So to the extent we want to discuss the report during the, while the public hearing is open, I think, I believe now would be the time to do it.
Right.
Go into executive session, likely briefly.
Right.
Return to open session at the conclusion of the executive session.
And in doing that, would, would Mr. Leon be part of that discussion?
I would recommend that Mr. Leon be invited to participate in that executive session.
Leon?
If, if.
Wilson?
That's fine, it was okay.
Okay with it, we can invite all three representatives from the applicant.
Okay.
Then.
Actually, I would ask that he make a request, Mr. Leon, request of the board that the board include all three, all three of the representatives in the executive session.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be a good idea.
Okay, so I will find that, I'll need a second, but moved that the select board convene in executive session for the purpose of complying with Massachusetts general law, namely, Chapter Six, Sections 1, 6, 7, 172B, and 803 CMR 2.05, to invite license applicant, Nazel Coyoto Leon, to attend and participate in the executive session and to return to open session at the conclusion of the executive session.
And I would just add the additional, two names of the additional representatives.
Okay, Wilson.
Wilson, you're here.
And Leona Leon. Okay. We need a vote. We need a vote. All those in favor?
A second.
Did you get a second? Get a second? Right. And you need a roll call vote.
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are we going to vote Josh?
Yes.
Heidi?
Yes.
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 Chair votes yes. All right. We're in executive session.
Thank you. Back in session. Okay. Section G, is there any other matters or issues that anyone on the Board wishes to speak about on this application? Okay. And this is a public hearing, so is there anyone who wants to publicly comment? Anyone on Zoom?
No hands.
No hands, okay. I'm going to close the hearing. And we'll have a board deliberation. Okay. But, um, so the hearing is officially closed. Do you guys want to sit? Do you want to sit here, go back to these seats, or? Sure. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. So this is board deliberation in their decision. There is a legal standard. We may issue a license upon finding that serves a public need and in such a manner to protect the common good. Before issuing a license to any applicant, the local licensing authority shall have an examination and decide and determine if the applicant is a person of good character. Thoughts? Yes?
I think, given the totality of the evidence, the application itself, the past record, that we do not meet this legal standard. We have a facility that is virtually across the street from the high school. So I think in terms of protecting the common good, I don't think we are going to meet that standard by approving this, nor do I feel certain that we have the good character needed to meet this standard. I think Needham sets a very high standard for giving alcohol licenses. This is a privilege. It's not a right. When I moved to town, it was a long time ago, but it was a dry town. There was a lot of debate about whether we would have alcohol in the town, and I think we have continued in the tradition of taking it very seriously and wanting very strict, strict adherence to our rules, which means very strict respect for our rules and our process. And I personally do not find that this legal standard as set out by the state is met.
Okay.
I agree.
Anyone else? Comments?
No, I agree. I, I think that we, I certainly couldn't say to the town that, in a location directly across my school, that we have met the standards that we've applied to others for awarding an alcohol license. I think we've been very careful about how those have been awarded and to whom and under what circumstances, and this is not in keeping with the other decisions. So it does not meet that standard.
Okay. Thank you. I would simply add that the application is flawed. Does anyone want to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would say, in my opinion, more than flawed. I think there are some statements that are inaccurate.
Yeah. Yes. Thank you. All right. One way, want to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to deny the application of Poet King Restaurant Group LLC, doing business as The Hungry Coyote, for a liquor license pursuant to general law 138, Chapter 12, to be located at 1185 Highland Avenue with Leona Leon as the manager of record for the following reasons. The application includes false statements in violation of 204 CMR 2.018, including Leona Leon's employment history does not reflect her actual dates of employment, and B, Ms. Leon failed to list the disciplinary actions taken on January 11th, 2022, and July 25, 2023 by this board in Section 10D of the application. And C, Mr. Leon provided false statements in his portion of the application materials. In addition, the second reason, the board finds that within the meaning of Massachusetts liquor licensing law, Mr. Leon is not of good character to hold a license for the following reasons. A, Mr. Leon has a history of ignoring orders of local municipal bodies, including disregard for the summary suspension order of the Needham Board of Health. And B, Mr. Leon has provided information to the select board relative to this application that he knows to be false, including information related to prior violations of the license. C, Mr. Leon has delayed providing documents requested by the select board relevant to this hearing. And D, the contents of the Coria report received in connection with this application. And I move to authorize Town Council to draft a decision capturing the board's discussion and vote, and authorize the town manager to sign said decision and send notice of the decision to the AVCC and the licensee as required under Chapter 138 of the general law.
Okay.
Good.
Okay. Any more discussion? All right, we'll have a vote. All those in favor? Of, of, all in favor of, of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Next up, the intermunicipal agreement for the Charles River Public Health District. We need Carrie Donald Manger, Shared Services and Training Hub, and Timothy McDonald, Director of Health and Human Services. Good evening. All right. Tim.
Thank you. So I wanted to take a moment to introduce Carrie, who hasn't met the board in a formal presentation before, and give her a chance to talk about the work that we are doing for shared public health services in a regional basis, and to talk a little bit about the different grants we have from the state that support those works. And to talk a little bit about an intermunicipal agreement. We have a memorandum of understanding across four communities, and we're looking to make it more formal. I understand we might not take a vote on that this time, but just have a discussion about the content.
So I, in your packet, I included the intermunicipal agreement, and then, yes, the slides. And it's brief, but I'll kind of run through this information and then see if there are any questions for you. So the purpose is to ask you to consider and potentially approve an intermunicipal agreement among the communities of Dover, Sherborne, Medfield, and Needham. And Needham is the host community for this arrangement. The arrangement is funded by a grant, and as Tim mentioned, we're currently operating under a memorandum of understanding. Needham manages the funds for the group of communities as host community. The broad reason for the, okay, Miles gave me control, I think. Maybe not. Yes, there we go. Thank you. The broad reason for the agreement is it's in the interest of improving the delivery of public health services for all of the communities, and the expectation that by being able to collaborate with other communities, there's opportunity for improvement, for learning from each other, and for supplementing existing services for special needs, you know, special circumstances. And so as a result, the collaborative under the agreement is designed to hire that additional staff and to provide that support. And then I included something, it's, sorry. It's a, it's kind of a combination organization chart and logic model. So you'll see at the top are the four communities that are the participants. The green at the top there is the, the input of the funding that comes from the state, $325,000 annually through June 30 of 2027. Then the other inputs would be, to the left, you see the staff, all listed under Needham as the host community, myself as manager, and then we have an assistant manager, a regional health, regional environmental health inspector, a regional public health nurse that we're working to hire, and a wonderful administrative specialist that has helped us immensely. The bottom left, you, sorry, the bottom right, you see, is a detailing of what the work is that goes with the funds. When you get a grant, you never just get money to do what you want. You have deliverables that you need to meet, and that is the approximation, you know, the, the interpretation of what those deliverables are. I have a much larger work plan that we administer and work through, but for purposes of keeping everybody on the same page, we have it boiled down there. The, the center, in the center, the blue dot, that's just sort of highlighting that were run by an advisory board. They're representatives from each of the four communities at the top. There's one vote per community. And in discussion among the communities, the representatives agreed that a quorum had to be four. We can't conduct business if not all communities are present, and that all votes need to be unanimous. So if an issue can't be agreed to by all four communities, then it's not ready, and we need to take it back and work it through. So that's that. So that this is just a little, it's some text to kind of give a little more clarity about how we operate. So we're governed by the advisory board, professional staff, so that's me and the manager and others. So we prevent proposals for the work plan and the budget that reflect what we understand to be the priorities of the advisory board, all of the communities. And we take feedback from them, we adjust it. We are bound by four requirements, and all four of those tests in that activities and expenditures bullet have to be met for everything. If everything we do or spend has to advance the ability of all the communities to meet the public health performance standards that were established by the state in October of 2023, the actions and the expenditures need to benefit all four communities. They need to be agreed to by all four communities, and last but absolutely not least, they have to meet the DPH allowable cost guidelines for the, the grant. And we meet the advisory board monthly to review progress, to discuss changing priorities, to talk about common issues. Oh.
No. Whoops.
All right.
Whoops. Who's driving?
There we go. So, okay. So this is a slide that I share with all of our communities. It's, you know, kind of a high level examples of what, why shared services? What can we do for each community so that we augment existing environmental health capacity? For example, Sam Menard and Amy McInerney have conducted inspections for, in the town of Needham, they have the ability to, to do inspections in each community if they're asked. And so they have provided some support at different times. We also can provide support for existing public health nursing capacity, and we're actually using that aspect of the program right now, and we are providing some support for the town of Medfield. They needed some, some public health nursing coverage, and we're able to do that under the grant. We, meaning Needham, the town of Needham, is, has the contract for the inspection technology that is used by all four communities. So there's a, it's called Food Code Pro, would be the food. And, and we manage the contract with the vendor for that, and that also makes it easier for the shared staff to be able to function in each of the other communities. We're working up the same platform, same information, it's easy access for everyone. And then staff also are able to coordinate needs assessment and data gathering, especially for the smaller towns, but for Needham as well. Folks are very busy with their existing. So as you're trying to do a needs assessment for both, is this this new issue? Is this, how does this pertain to our community? Or there's a novel way of food preparation? How many of our communities are engaging in this? Shared staff can get involved in that. And we actually have some plans to conduct some strategic planning with the group this year. So we'll use that hopefully in preparation for a community health needs assessment in a coming year. And then the last thing we do with the funds, one thing that we can benefit folks is reimbursing for costs for training opportunities and membership to professional associations. It's very important in public health in Massachusetts to be actively participating with your colleagues through the professional organizations, and not all communities prioritize that. I know Needham has always thankfully been very supportive of that kind of education and connection, and we make it possible for other folks as well. And then briefly about the agreement itself. So it's an agreement under Chapter 44A, which is the enabling legislation to permit any community to enter into an agreement with another. It's based on a draft that was developed by the Mass Association of Health Boards. So there weren't, we didn't have to start on blank paper. There was a common standard agreement. There are 51 shared services arrangements in Massachusetts right now, ranging from four communities to, I think 17 is the largest, but I could be wrong. But all of them start with that same document. It's reviewed. There have been minor adjustments. Was able to work with Chris Heap, and he reviewed first because Needham is host community, and it needs to protect the interests of Needham especially. And then it's been reviewed by all of the other town councils and approved by all of them. It's a, I know it's long, but it's a fairly standard agreement, really sort of laying out what are the responsibilities for the host community, what are the responsibilities for the participating communities? How do we govern ourselves? How do we decide to leave if a community wanted to leave the arrangement? And, you know, what can be done, what can't be done? And I guess the last piece I'll say is that it is, this agreement is required by the DPH as part of condition for funding for, so that $325,000, they're asking that all 51 and any subsequent arrangements, shared services arrangements memorialize themselves through a formal agreement, not simply an MOU. And, and there will, there's the potential for impact on funding if we do not get adopted by all. And I think that's it. That's all. So that's my contact information if you want to know more about shared services. And I don't know if, what questions there might be.
Anything to add? Comments? Questions? Yes?
So fundamentally, shared services are a good idea, right? I'm curious, we are at this point a year and a quarter into this, right? Was there a work plan for last year? What did we do last year and what are our goals this year?
Okay. So there was a work plan for last year. It was acknowledged as a, it, it's different than this year's work plan. If I showed you the chart for FY '24, that logic model or chart, it shows the, what the work was for that. That, for last year, there was, we were charged with investigating whether a tobacco district collaborative might be of interest for the four communities. We were charged with moving the intermunicipal agreement through all of the communities. We had to do some work. There was a document assessment, a document review process, and went through inspection reports for each of the communities. And Sam Menard and I got some guidance from subject matter experts, and then reviewed that with each of the communities for opportunities for improvement, opportunities, you know, best practices that were identified and the like. And, you know, I, DPH acknowledges, it's a, it's a new program, and we are a group of four communities that has not, does not have a long history of collaboration. So there's a certain amount of trust building, coming to understand what our common issues are, what are not our common issues, and that's a large part of what the work was last year. The work for this year, I can point you to the The work for this year, I can point you to, I can go back on the slides.
Carrie, also, maybe if you could help us understand, how did these four communities get chosen? As opposed to, you know, maybe not five communities with another community that we think of frequently as a partner, so.
So we frequently partner in the public health sense with a group that's called NC-8, and that's Canton, Dedham, Milton, Needham, Norwood, Walpole, Wellesley, Westwood. I think I've hit eight. We were originally going to work with them as part of a group, and we have sort of longstanding relationships, and have had, not as large as these, but shared grants over the last 20 years. Denise Scarlett, the town's representative, who's done a lot for the community and for public health, asked me to work with the other communities in her district, so Dover and Medfield, as a way to engage them because they had smaller health departments with less capability. So I do think one of the challenges has sort of been developing relationships and building a trust because historically it's hard to function when you have a small department and you don't show up to a meeting, right? That, you know, it's easy for me to interact with Dedham because they always come to the meeting. I can always talk to them. In communities that don't have enough staff to send people to regional meetings or to trainings, it's harder to develop a relationship.
Okay.
So if I could follow up on that, and I don't know if the origin of some of this cooperation wasn't during the pandemic also, when we were helping those communities. But I do notice when I look at the set of communities, Needham is much larger than the other ones. Needham has a, obviously you've just alluded to it, a much more fully developed, much more fully developed Department of Health than these other communities. So it's easy for me to understand the benefit to them.
Sure.
Could you help me understand the benefit to us?
Maybe I can do the food and septic example? So, for example, the communities of Dover and Sherburne have very limited food permits, less than a dozen a year. Needham has about 190, at least as of last year. We do food all the time, multiple times a week. The town is, the vast majority of the town is on sewer. Not too much of Needham is on septic. We get septic once a month, once every other month. But Dover and Sherburne are dealing with septic and fairly complicated septic because they have potable wells on a very regular basis. So while we do have some experience in wastewater, they do it a lot more regularly and are a lot more facile with regulations and the understanding. That's sort of a very small example, but that's one of the examples. They do septic every day. We don't do it that often. It'd be very easy to either rely on them to do our septic or to at least tap them for expertise and help. I do think there's value also when you think about the pandemic, and if your neighbors aren't able to sort of swim on their own, you will spend quite a lot of time trying to help them tread water. If they can tread water on their own, then maybe you can all do a little bit better in terms of swimming. But it is the case that it is unusual that there is one community that is as large as Needham. You know, rough numbers, Sherburne's 4,000 people, Dover's 6,000 people, Medfield's 12,000 people. So Needham is bigger than the other three communities combined. That is fairly unusual.
Chair, can I follow up on that? So do you mean to say that resources, you know, someone, someone, an employee from Needham might work on a project in Medfield and vice versa? Is that how it's structured, or would there be employees of the collaborative themselves?
So primarily, what are you going to say?
So shared services staff are able to operate in all of the communities. And that, as Tim was about to say, that's primarily how it would happen. But absolutely, you know, there, there may be an opportunity or a need where nurses from Needham are supporting a flu clinic, a large-scale flu clinic that's conducted in Medfield because they have a great location for it. That's kind of traditional public health mutual aid. It's not, it's not quite the shared services piece, but, but it, it's a cousin of it, I guess we'd say. But that was actually, that was an extensive piece of the review with town council was talking about the, well, okay, who are, who are operating where and what are the powers and responsibilities that they have and need to have? Did I answer your question?
No, it does answer, thank you, because if this gets approved, I think the Needham Department of Public Health budget is going to be looked at very differently. Like, we'll have to ask questions, like, how much of the time has gone to other towns?
And so I think right now the commitment of time is modest. You know, I attend some meetings. I meet with Carrie as my, the person I directly supervise, and she has a team underneath her. I would say, for example, Carrie, use the example of Medfield. Right now, our regional shared nurse is vacant. Medfield had need for coverage of Maven, which is a virtual epidemiological network, so it communicable disease cases. Our Needham nurses are helping to cover Medfield while they deal with their staff vacancy. So that, that is not a huge amount of time, but that, you know, is an hour a week or something, depending on the volume they have. They're a smaller community. But that's the example of the type of sort of time commitment we're talking about. I do think, to Carrie's point, we had, we've had mutual aid that has existed for a while. I remember one example of two of our environmental health agents. One was on vacation and one got very sick, and there was a small fire at McDonald's. And the town would be very happy to know that I did not do the inspection. We asked Wellesley to send over one of their inspectors. They did the inspection. So there's always been some amount of that, but this formalized it and gives us a little bit of a deeper bench to, to make those happen.
Right, and I think, you know, that we need to fill the regional public health nurse position, and once we fill that, then there would not be the demand on the Needham staff. It would be, it's a shared services responsibility. And part of shared services is about acknowledging that things like what Tim described happen not infrequently, even though Needham does have a more well-developed department. There's two regular access inspectors, and if both of them were out for some reason, then the ability to tap into shared services is absolutely an advantage for any community, for both inspections and for the public health nursing.
Ask another question.
Thank you.
Do you envision that the $325,000 budget will be supplemented by contributions from the individual towns?
So not at the individual shared service level right now, but at the sort of level of department heads at DPH who oversee the program. They're engaging with the professional associations in Massachusetts about long-term. Because right now, a significant portion of ARPA money that the state has is supporting their work on public health modernization, these shared services, as well as kind of a comprehensive data solution. The governor, in her last couple of budgets, has slashed some of the funding that was appropriated by the legislature. I think it was 15 million. She cut it to 10. I think last year it was 10 million. She cut it to nine or something to that effect. So there is a question long-term, looking at like four years and out, of where the funding comes from, and is there an idea of trying to do a cost share? Is there other non-state and municipal funding sources? But everyone sort of says, oh, go find grants. We do that a lot. But I'm not sure there's a grant specifically for this. But I do think there is long-term questions about sustainability, especially, you know, as costs rise naturally with inflation and salary raises, but the, the grant funding from the state remains flat.
Thank you.
I'm just thinking through. So if you hire employees into this collective and the funding doesn't come through, does the collaborative dissolve? Or what happens?
I think that's a very fair point. At least right now, the collaborative would likely dissolve. We could fall back on some of the mutual aid agreements, some of these sort of emergency sharing when there is a staff absence or sudden illness or something. We're fortunate that we have a three-year contract and a three-year funding commitment. I think the hope is to sort of demonstrate value and then make that case to the legislature, DPH making the case, as well as the Coalition for Local Public Health, that this is a valuable function and we need resources to invest in it. Part of the challenge is we're looking at a public health system that's very inequitable across the state, right? It's funded by municipal budgets, and there are some communities that invest quite a lot in it, and there are some communities that don't, just in the same way you think of like education funding, right? The state is trying to assure a minimum standard, and that's part of the reason they're doing this, because they can't get funding to everyone to move them up to a standard, but they could give funding to 51 partnerships instead of 351 municipalities to try to collaboratively get them up to a standard.
Sure. I guess I just wonder, I mean, not that this is an option on the table, but we've discussed that the sizes and relative robustness of the health departments in these four towns are perhaps not equal. Is it not possible to have them join the previous group that you mentioned to sort of spread the wealth a little bit better without so much of an impact or a potential impact to Needham?
For, so I think there, there certainly is possibility. I do think that the NC-8 group kind of is all swimming at a certain pace, and right now, the other communities in our shared service agreement wouldn't be able to keep up with that pace. So I think that the root of your question is perfectly valid. I do think we are going slow right now to try to help develop our communities in our agreement so that they can kind of swim at a competitive level.
Mr. Chair, if I could add, I think to get to the question, when you're the big fish, to keep Chris, Tim's analogy here, we also have the most need. So we have this shared services staff with this great team, working on all sorts of things in Needham that, that existing staff weren't doing. So it is altruistic, but it's also highly beneficial to us because we are the biggest user of the shared service.
And, thank you. And if I may, I'll just, I mean, as I think I mentioned, shared services staff are conducting inspections in Needham, so there is a direct benefit. I'm able to participate in health department activities. I'm part of Tim's kind of management team. And we do some work on strategic planning and the like. And the, we're doing a work group. I know Sam Menard has been working closely with the Needham inspectors on, on standardizing at the request of Tara Gurd. And now we're looking to expand that to a work group for the four communities, and we'll be able to do some more standardization across that. So there, there absolutely is active benefit for the town of Needham. It's, it's, I don't want to, I don't want to leave the impression that somehow Needham is, is not receiving any benefit from it.
Two other quick thoughts if I could. One, one example of that is we have a food inspector, part-time, 10 hours a week. She's expert in her field. With shared service staff able to take over some of her inspections, she's going to do three trainings later this fall for our food service establishments, sort of advanced training on how to run a good restaurant and pass inspection. She is the person that developed the curriculum for the entire state, and we have her on our staff. But we can free her up from sort of the blocking and tackling for a little bit because we have other staff that can do the inspections, and she can do kind of a higher-level function. There is also the benefit, Needham historically hasn't done this, but we have started in the last couple of years, taking an agency admin fee for regional grants. So there is money that goes to Needham for that benefit, which is helpful. It's a fairly small amount of money, very modest, but it's not nothing. This year, it's going to pay for a training that the town manager's office is putting on for department heads. Last year, it helped HR with some recruitment and retention work, so.
You know, I, I find this very interesting. It's, I definitely agree with the idea, you know, for equity, we want bright, we don't want bright spots, but we want to spread around for good health all around. And it's nice to be able to avoid the replication or duplication. The agreement does sound like a really long prenup, and that just is, it's very much like, I have questions, so that's why I just want to dig into it more.
Yep.
And see, what are we getting into? Because it is really complicated.
Sure.
But I appreciate the mission that you guys are doing, and I appreciate the state has tried to find a good way to get equity across the state. And so, yeah, let me just read the, hold on, I'll have more questions, and we'll talk about this. My only, like, shortlist strange thing is your logo looks like a crucifix.
It's very, it's a variation on the, on the public, well, it's, it's not a variation on a crucifix. It's a very, it's a variation on the public health logo.
Yes, one logo becomes, and then you realize you've gone religious.
Interesting. Okay. Now I can't unsee that.
Yeah, no, I know. I think, yeah, interesting.
That's what I'm paid for.
Whoa.
Actually.
Okay, now I can't unsee it. I'm sorry.
No.
But thank you very much. This is a lot of work, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for the time.
I don't know if it was 100% clear. In each community, the, the ask is for the Board of Health and the Select Board to take a vote.
Yeah.
So all the Boards of Health have approved.
Okay.
Sherburne Select Board has, Needham, we obviously came tonight, Medfield.
Is next Tuesday night.
Okay.
And so we're lining up all the ducks.
Perfect.
So I do think, when it comes back, I would like to know that everybody else is on board before this board comes in last, I think, would be useful.
That's the problem with regionalism, like, because they'll probably, I wonder if someone in Medfield will say, well, I won't sign until Needham does.
Well, if, if I may, when I was doing, when I was working on a public health mutual aid agreement a while ago, the town of Brookline said, it was 27 towns, Boston was not part of it, and Brookline said, well, we won't sign until Boston is part of it. And so I had to go chase down Boston, and I got them. So I understand the, the interest, and I think that it is an interest for all the communities, but certainly I can provide you an update on where we are. We are moving along.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. No, I'm going to leave that here.
Okay. Next up. Abatement of Community Stormwater Mitigation Assessment Policy. Abe Davidson, Charis Lustig, and Cecilia. Please come on. This is a follow-up to our permeable impermeable. This is on part two of the stormwater mitigation assessment fees, and that is, there are times that we need to correct billing errors. And what we're coming, before the Board's approval, is to adopt the policy for administrative abatements, which are items that are, would be abated under the recommendation of the Director of Public Works to the town manager, and the town manager would determine whether it's appropriate or not. It would be for errors, billing the wrong person, billing the wrong tier, an incorrect allocation of an assessment for a multi-family, a multi-owner property, items which isn't really changing what is actually due to the town. It's just correcting the error for something that's been built and was built incorrectly. We're recommending that the Water Sewer Rate Structure Committee be asked to look at whether or not we should look at a credit program or a financial hardship program for the stormwater fees, and perhaps come back with recommendations when they come to the public hearing for setting rates in, in June of '25. There is more thought that has to go into that is, what, what would qualify for a reduction in the fee? There has been many inquiries, but one of the factors is that this is for ensuring that the polluted stormwater is being controlled. It's not preventing flooding. It's preventing the pollution of stormwater from getting in and affecting the waterways and such. The town has millions of dollars of work that it must do in accordance with the permit and the work that it's committed to, and we have to generate that fee. As noted, when the fee was adopted, Needham's fee is one of the lowest in, in the communities. And if we did substantial reductions in the fees, the annual fee for most people is $38.20. Right next door, Newton, $100. Dedham, $206. Same comparisons. Right next door, Newton, $100. Dedham, $206. Same comparisons. Shrewsbury, $90. Pepperell, $60. Boston is in the process of implementing, and they would be looking for a single-family home at $107.76. So.
I think Wellesley is a minimum of $18 a month.
So to all those points, that's one of the things that has to weigh, is since we have to generate certainly a minimum of six to eight hundred thousand a year, if we did substantial reductions in the fee, you're effectively going to have to raise the fee.
Okay.
So those are the sort of considerations that would be helpful by having a citizen committee, which looks at water and sewer enterprise, and be able to vet that and ask the tough questions and what if. And as the Boards are aware, they come with multiple scenarios for consideration with the water and sewer rates, and they can come forward with that. The other thing we must not forget is, some of the inquiries people are making, they're doing the improvements that they're required to do under the bylaws that have been adopted by the town anyways. What it is, we want everybody to be there, and this rate structure was done in assumption that everybody's there.
Okay.
So.
All right, let me do that.
I would add that this really mirrors what we do for the water and sewer billing, which is, you already have an administrative policy.
Okay. Thank you. All right, questions, comments?
Thank you for putting this together.
Yeah, no, it's a need. Thank you.
I'll have a question.
Yeah.
I know there have been a lot of questions about the stormwater fee for residents. After reviewing all of them, like, how many would have qualified for an abatement?
We're preparing the list right now, so we will be executing that abatement as soon as the policy is adopted. I think the vast majority of the questions around the, were not items that would have been abated under this process, but there are certainly some cases that we didn't foresee when we were looking, or, you know, just simply the impermeable surface had changed from when we had calculated it. And those items would be ones that would be impacted by this. I think there's a lot more questions out there about the fee itself and why it was imposed, and frustration with that than with the actual administrative process.
No, I just don't want anyone to be confused that this policy may not result in very many abatements.
Correct.
And I would anticipate there'll decline. As was mentioned, when we first implemented, there's inevitably, unfortunately, there'll be errors happening, just data points that we have that may be incorrect. And as people identify those errors, we correct them, and it's fixed going forward.
Do you envision this policy will, not this one, but even the whole idea of measuring the permeable surface will sort of change the market of how much people pay for, you know, will they change micro decisions and how people?
It's a just insignificant fee. I doubt that would be the primary motivator for, you know, how they construct their homes.
All right. You just mean after rationalization. Okay. All right, thank you. Anything else? All right. I would welcome a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that the Board adopt the attached policy SB FIN 013, Abatement of Community Stormwater Mitigation Assessments, and authorize the Chair of the Board to sign attesting to the adoption of the policy.
Second.
All right. Any other comments? Let's have a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You guys have a policy. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have to close the October 21st, October 21st, 2024 Special Town Meeting Warrant. It's not on there. Okay.
Well, it is the warrant that we were going to say. Just to walk through and to ask the Board if you would like any presentations made. You have two minutes between now and coming here.
Yeah.
So just a couple of things that have changed since the draft version. The Article 1, the appropriate for roadway improvements from Eversource, this is the amount that Eversource has committed to us. So currently, although there's some hope in the Municipal Modernization Act that we would be able to automatically reserve these funds, currently when we get them, we have to have them re-appropriated. So these are roadways that included Tanglewood, Damon, Tillotson, Hollow Ridge, Fiftieth Circle, Sunnyside, and Nichols. And so, most of the work will be done on those roads, but some of the work, I think it's Nichols that had to be done this year. So this article would allow us to use the funds for the next sort of set of roads, just appropriating for infrastructure.
Okay.
So that is the amount that we are committed from Eversource.
Okay.
The opioid settlement fund program, the Health Division is requesting $82,000 from the Community Opioid Settlement Fund. The bulk of this is to allow us to have the peer recovery coach work full-time as opposed to part-time through the end of the fiscal year. The opioid program got off-cycle with the budget because it ended up starting in October. So this funding will get us to a regular cycle where it will be part of the annual review. You did meet with the peer recovery coach.
I thought we went to Bill.
And so that will allow us to have that position be full-time, consistent with the settlement.
I have a question about that. Is that position envisioned to be full-time going forwards?
Yes, funded through this fund.
Okay.
And this fund is 1.8 million, roughly, so we have a long trajectory. Stephen Palmer Planning, this also has a number. We've done a lot of work on scoping. What we see is two separate engagements. The first, roughly $50,000, is to help us develop a strategy for tenant relocation. It isn't the actual relocation. It'd be the strategy, working with the town, the property owner, and the tenants, and identifying their needs, and figuring out how we might then engage a tenant relocation service. And hopefully, it will include, as part of the scope, an estimate of the cost for that. So there will be future costs. It will also take a look at working with the property owner about, you know, vacant units, and whether there's a different way of using those units now as opposed to filling them and having to relocate them. So this is something that we think is really timely because we want to make sure that we find the best possible location for people who live there, and perhaps prevent people from having to move in and go.
Right. Because the lease from Crown Shield did not stipulate, all those years ago, not stipulate an empty building.
Yes. The building returns to the town in the condition that it exists on May 2nd or 3rd of 2027.
Okay.
The other piece is the redevelopment piece. And the staff working group has engaged with several consultants to try to get an estimate of what that community engagement process on redevelopment might be. And so this would be modest condition assessment of the facility to determine whether it could be repurposed, and then community engagement about what would happen next. We don't want to end up in a situation where we move everybody out, and then it's sitting there vacant, and we have had significant buildings in town, remain vacant. So these are two different engagements, but we really do think they both are right for starting now. And we would absolutely envision a working group appointed by the Board to steer this community engagement process on redevelopment, and to get a lot of public input, starting with the property of jurisdictional owners, which are the Board and the property.
Okay.
This is goal of the Select Board.
Yes.
Five.
So the second one's $100,000?
Yes.
Can those be broken out in the description?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Assessment. The other number that wasn't in there before is a, Dave, would you mark? Thank you.
So the purpose of this is to do a supplemental appropriation to the Finance Department's budget for the costs associated with the state-required five-year recertification of the town's tax assessment processes. The services that the town needs to use, partly required by state law, by Department of Revenue, and partly by workload, both of those bids came in substantially higher than I had estimated. The budget had provided for $58,000 more than normally is budgeted for the assessors' division for those costs. The two major contracts associated, one associated with residential and commercial real estate, and the second one is with personal property, better known as business equipment. And those two services, the cost of those contracts are $90,600 more than what the budget is built upon. If we did not have a fall town meeting, I would have been seeking a reserve fund transfer from the Finance Committee, but since we have a town meeting, I think it's appropriate for this to be a supplemental appropriation to the budget.
I apologize. He said this is for a reassessment of our?
Every community, once every five years, must have an examination of its appraisal and assessment process, verification that it's in compliance with state regulations, that the methodologies are appropriate, that properties are falling within the, within 90 to 110% of what the market value is. Commercial property is much more complicated than residential property, and hence, that review tends to be more expensive. It's also noted that with the five-year, there'll be some notable swings in valuations, which the assessors will be speaking with the Board, as well as they also have a public comment period once the proposed values are coming out. Now, the important thing to remember when that happens, the town does not generate any more income from that or any less income. It's just recognizing the market shifts. So if all the values went up, the tax rate would go down, because the tax rate would only generate the same amount of money. If all the values went down, the tax rate would go up to generate the same amount. Nothing's that perfect. All the properties in town are not going to go up or down by the same. There's going to be different variables. One of the items that Department of Revenue has already told us that we should, that they're expecting to see a change is land values, is because the value of land is, to no surprise to anybody, people buying land, knocking down buildings, that is saying what the cost of land is. So the base land values are going to go up for towns. And a very important thing is, when you think about a single-family home, whether you're allowed to build on a 5,000-square-foot lot, or if it's a one-acre zone, it's still only one building lot. So those smaller parcels are almost as valuable as the one-acre, the 10,000-square-foot lot. Now, there's a little additional pricing, but it's residual because if I was owning, you can only build one house. So that's all it's good for.
All right. I have a phone.
The water and sewer are the same as we had talked about before, recognizing salary and wages from the contract, and also the NWR assessment differences from that which we had in our hands for May. We did end up with one unpaid bill of a prior year in HR for medical services from BID Needham, which requires meeting approval. The PEG programming, which, this will not be on a cycle. This would be every time we have a town meeting, because we get funding from the cable companies on the interim, and then we have to reappropriate it. So there's $142,000, $98,000 to be appropriated for local cable access. The four zoning articles are the articles that the Board voted to accept and refer. They are not the final articles, so they're here to give you a sense of the length of the warrant.
Right.
The first two are the titles. I noticed they said "base plan" rather than "base compliance plan."
We can ask. This is.
Was that their language?
This is their language.
Okay. I think.
Heidi, am I correct? That was their language?
It is base compliance. I think it's actually the compliance plan and the neighborhood housing plan, but I honestly don't know.
Katie, you'll have to.
Yeah, I honestly don't know.
Right.
Said so many things.
Does Planning Board come and give us a presentation, and we vote on these articles?
We can try to set that up. Be October 18.
Yeah.
See Katie making a list of ten words. Article 12, the estimate of the project team and Public Works, which is the project managers at the High School Task Works, is the $3 million project. The CPC has been just so helpfully working with us on breaking this logic out of cycle because we had to move it from the last. So we are proposing a combination of sources, CPA and non-CPA .
How did the cost compare to the proposed cost in May?
Did you have that? It came in, the proposed, what was in the warrant from May, $2.4?
$2.7.
What's that? Yeah. Given these kinds of projects, the Director of Public Works feels that there needs to be more.
More screening.
And there were changes made to the planning board.
I was going to say, I'm wondering if, given all the questions that have existed on this one, this seems like one that would be worth a presentation.
Excellent.
Yeah.
We got Cecilia in there, too.
I would love that.
And this was a correction on, a change to the warrant from the last time you saw it, and the reason that we had to resend it is that we had the wrong title and explanation for it. So as we talked about, we are proposing to change the, what we used to call the Capital Improvement Fund, to now be called the Capital Equipment Fund, and to reserve direct appropriation into the stabilization fund of the sales service. So the, we had the Capital Improvement Fund, and then we had the Capital Facility Fund, and it's always been a little bit confusing. It's the overlap for those. So I know Dave will be coming in and talking to you about stabilization fund targets in October, I think?
May.
Yeah. But this would be asking town meeting to change the fund to be clear that it's equipment, and then fund it through sales service equipment.
Okay.
Jesus.
Excellent.
Do you need a motion, Mr. Chair?
Hold on, I gotta get back to the topic, because I got stuck on the Planning Board zoning. Okay. I would welcome a motion.
Mr. Chair, move that the Board vote to close the warrant for the October 21st, 2024 Special Town Meeting, subject to minor technical corrections to be made by the Town Manager, Town Council, and Bond Council, and potential changes to the zoning, depending upon what Planning Board says.
Second.
Okay. Discussion? Come to, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
It's closed. Following up on Select Board's goal-setting in July, and follow-up goal-setting and conversation in August, we are recommending that the Board vote to set office hours for Town Hall, Public Services Administration, and Rosemary on a year-round basis, with the earlier opening every day at 8:00. opening every day at eight o'clock, the late night on Tuesdays at six o'clock, and early closing on Fridays at twelve thirty. I would note two things. There are some buildings that don't follow these hours, the Center of Heights and the Library. On occasion, there are staff in those buildings or, you know, we have other buildings too, safety. There are staff who may follow this schedule, but it's really up to the operations of the department that will allow that. And the group that did have summer hours similar, that would continue summer hours until changed, is the DPW employees in, in field operations and at the RTS. And we continue to have conversations with them about what makes sense, if there's anything that would change on those hours, and that will come back.
Can you just clarify that again? RTS would be on the schedule?
RTS is, RTS is only on the summer hour schedule.
Yeah.
As are the DPW field employees.
But that's not open discussion.
Yes, the summer, and they're not part of this. I wanted you to know because you did ask. We're continuing conversations.
Conversation, yeah.
And so sometime before next summer, it's likely that we'll come back to you and say, here, we have another idea.
Okay.
That's not the same.
Excellent. Thoughts, questions?
Mr. Chair, I had office hours at the end of last month, and I had a resident who came in who wanted to discuss this. And he asked, based on some experience he had in the federal government, whether instead of this, where the offices would be closed on Friday afternoon, had we considered sort of a flex time where somebody would cover all the hours and everybody would get some sort of choice, like in case, say, some people didn't want Friday afternoons off, they wanted Tuesday mornings off or whatever, but, but that the whole thing would be covered. So that was, that was his question that I am passing along.
So the town, non-union and at least one union have flexible hours programs, so if somebody has a need, we can do that. This is the, you know, the non-union and the ITW employees who it affects, this is the preferred option for employees.
I guess the question he had was why? Why is it preferred to close everything on the Friday rather than trying to find a way to keep coverage but let people have the hours they want?
So many of our offices rely on two or three or four people, and it's, it's impossible to find meaningful ways to equalize that same time off. So, you know, we, we were running our office for a long time with three and it's just, it doesn't, it just doesn't work. We're a really small operation. When you think of the town hall as a whole, maybe, but we're really treasury and assessing and HR and clerks and retirement and, you know, that kind of things. Do you have any, anything else?
No, I think as much as we love to cover for each other, if you put me in the treasury window, I'm not going to be very helpful on Friday afternoons, so we need to use our own resources.
But within each department, you don't have enough people to make something like that work.
Well, in most departments, you wouldn't.
And it really is an interesting phenomenon since the pandemic that people have found other ways to interact with us that are not coming in the building. We love to see them and we love it when it's early voting and we see a lot of people here, but even people on early voting day come and put their ale in the box outside. So, yeah. You, I mean, in Tatiana's office, all of our job applicants are now online.
Everything is online, so you don't really take in resumes. We, you know, can't deliver anymore.
Yes.
I'm just, my concern isn't really with these hours. It's just making sure that people are aware of them, particularly when there's, you know, caveats or like Rosemary during the summer is going to be open longer and the dump for the RTS, rather, is going to be open shorter hours and then knowing which building, et cetera, et cetera. I just, I just would like it if we could do, I mean, I actually came here last Friday at two. Oops. So just. Doors are locked. But I, I guess, I guess I just want to make sure that people know about these changes so that they can take advantage of the early hours, for example, and then not find themselves banging on the door, you know, after closing hours.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think the year-round nature will help because it's sort of like, was it September? Is it May? We also, I mean, we have, our Center of the Heights is open different hours, the Library certainly open different hours.
Yeah, it's confusing.
You know, the Rosemary has been up. So we, we can make it clear that not everything is the same and, and make it clear what they are. For, for our field operations and in particular, the public isn't really interacting that way, but the RTS in particular is one that people are very, it's really important people know when they're open.
So I haven't, you know, done a survey of the various web pages or anything, but if we could maybe just make the hours have new prominence in, especially at these different places where people maybe go and check online before they come.
Yep.
Kate, I'm also wondering if, you know, on the Friday afternoon when you close, if there's a, you know, a note, a notice or a board that's at the front door that says, you know, town offices are closed on Friday afternoons.
They're on every door.
Self-service, you know, some of your main self-service options are, can be found here or something like that.
Yeah. And we do, and the clerks recently, just recently, had something that had a deadline on Friday and it directed people to go to the dispatch and police, so.
We could drop it off there and then the town clerk went over there after five and picked up everything. My creative way, so.
Yes, directing people to the website and to the drop boxes is a good idea.
Yeah.
And this will help with retention?
It is.
Excellent. All right, anything else?
Certainly part of what you see is that a number of communities have already made this change.
Yeah.
Right? So if somebody is in this area and they're evaluating offer from Needham and an offer from somewhere else, this is another factor I think that people consider, so.
Okay. Excellent. Does anyone want to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that the board vote to set the office hours as listed in the packet for Town Hall, Public Service Administration Building and Rosemary Recreation Complex on a year-on basis.
Second.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, let's vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
We will work on marketing.
We will work on marketing.
Thank you, Tatiana, for all your work on this.
See you on Friday.
Thank you for your patience today.
We'll see you Friday afternoons.
All right.
Mr. Chair, just one quick item, just to keep reporting, some of the grants that we have received. We got a grant from the Office of Coastal Zone Management. We were notified in August for the Alderbrook Best Management Practice Design Using Green Stormwater Infrastructure to Betrayal Quality in the amount of a hundred and twenty-five thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars. Team effort, but certainly the lead efforts of our sustainability manager. And I just, I did a double check, since her grant efforts, we've been awarded three hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and one dollars in grants. We have another one point two pending, so.
One point two million.
We have, one point two million pending.
Paid for her salary.
So far, yes.
Yes.
And I would say she's ahead. Gabby Kreenen will tell you that it's a team effort and she worked with everybody, but she's actually working with planning and community development on a, on a grant. So she's, she's, she's in stormwater, she's in sustainability for climate, she's in housing, she's helping us all over the, parking, uh, parking, I think that one is parking. That's really helpful.
All right, excellent. Thank you very much. Next up, we have board, committee reports, board discussion, committee reports. Anything to offer people?
The, the tree committee, I hate, I hesitate to call it the tree committee.
It's a working group?
It's a working group. Yes, it's, it's beginning. Met sometime since we last met. Late August. Thank God you're here, Kate. I, I mean, honestly.
I wasn't there, but I.
You weren't there. That's even worse. And discussed kind of next steps. One of the things I already mentioned was the, the issue of, of changing the sort of town acknowledgement and notification and treatment of berm trees. So that was one kind of thing that really, I, I felt like makes a difference, something we saw and corrected to a certain extent immediately. And we are moving forward with more meetings to determine the direction of a future treaty committee.
So you're branching out.
Can the public participate in this?
Not yet, but eventually, soon, soon.
Are you, is the working group coming before us in October?
So the working group was created by me to help me make a recommendation to you, so that's what will be happening.
Okay. Anything else?
I held office hours this evening.
How'd they go?
They were sparsely attended, but I did have a very nice conversation about disc golf, which I understand you have investigated as well. And, and I was left a note about tree remodels. So.
I can report that I still haven't been to any committees, but I have two in the next week, so next time I'll have some reports.
All right.
TCHOC met last night and we had an update from Reg Foster on the status of the Needham Housing Authorities Project, and they had just a few days late last week selected a developer. They had three very good offers and the developers who they selected actually came into our meeting and we got to meet them. And they had, they were very impressed with the work that had been done so far and the engagement of the community, and they were very hopeful for us. The state, maybe you guys are all aware, but the state has voted quite a large budget for housing, including affordable housing. You know, we're hopeful that that creates some opportunities for us as we compete for funding and they feel that they are on track to be ready for the next funding round, which the E O H L C, did I get that right? It's not announced yet, but typically is in November. And Katie, would you add anything to that? So it was good news, good progress.
Excellent. Great. Stormwater Working Group. Josh, you want to take it?
Sure. We met August twenty-seventh and discussed many deficiencies with the current stormwater bylaw and started to discuss potential ways to, to fix those, you know, to amend the bylaw. We're meeting next on September seventeenth or is it twenty-fourth?
That's not my question.
Later in September. I forget the date.
You meet on the twenty-fourth, so it's probably.
So it's the seventh, yeah. So there's still more to do. I, I think we're still on track to bring something for town meeting in, in May.
Yeah. Okay. Since we last met, there's been overdose awareness vigil, which is remarkable. There's discussion how to administer Narcan, which is really amazing. The SEAL and Branding Committee met today. Progress continues working on the SEAL. We actually have really interesting discussions about like the historical clothing and appropriateness and if the balance of people in the field and it's very interesting. We'll get to something from town meeting. Trustees, trustees of Memorial Park chug along, they're doing great. We have a golf course inspection in August since we last met. E O L, E O H C L, visit from.
L C.
L C, from Secretary Ed Augustus, he came to town. It's good to meet him and he got a tour of the London Chambers. Congratulations to Louise Miller for her first election as town clerk. So a baptism by ballots. And a reminder that tomorrow is nine eleven, there's a ceremony at the Public Safety Building at ten AM. So if you're watching this on recording, you've missed it. Okay. And we're not done yet. We have executive session and the chair would welcome a motion. Oh, I should add, because we're looking at executive session exception number six to discuss the purchase of real property and we need to have an executive session. So do we need a motion? We have a motion for that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that the select board enter into executive session pursuant to exception six to discuss the purchase of real property and not return to open session prior to adjournment.
Second.
Okay.
Do you have to say if the chair?
Yes.
If, oh, yes, if the chair, that's right. I noticed that language isn't in, I thought something new. Okay. But I have to say that the chair finds this appropriate.
Have you conducted the discussion in open session without a detrimental effect?
All right. Thank you. Secret of the Councils. And I do. So we're going to vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Roll call, roll call.
All right, Josh?
Yes.
Heidi?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. All right, anyone? See you downstairs, thank you.